Hey, I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the question. Thank you. Welcome everyone for coming into the town meeting tonight on November 18th. I wanted to remind everyone that like we did at the last meeting, we have the camera in the rear now so we can actually see everybody. And I understand it turned out very well. And thank you to the audience. We didn't pick up a lot of background noise during the last taping of the town meeting. But thank you so much for helping us out to give a better taping so everyone else can have a look at it. Thank you so much. So, the minutes of November 4th, we have a motion to approve the amendments. We have a motion and a second and discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report, payment of the bills.
Seven minutes.
We have a motion and a second and discussion on the financial reports. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Lewis, we have a budget amendment?
Yes, we do.
Steve, you got a budget amendment?
Yeah, first wife amendment, another fifth here. Budget amendment number 2016 dash zero zero one, incorrect, $7,056 in revenue from seed funds for the purpose of providing capital investment for the health and peace department for a upgraded ID card maker and food assistance.
Okay, this was something that the chief, you mentioned this last Wednesday during the workshop, that you'd like to upgrade the locking mechanisms?
Yeah, it's a keyless entry system. Well, the keyless entry system is as old as the building, so we've been in the building since 96, almost 20 years. We have our officers out in the community now with access cards, not only to our own building, but to numerous other facilities in the community where we may need access at different times. One of the reasons we want to upgrade is we can't put other facilities' card information on our own ID cards. So, we're going to go to a key fob system which will give us access obviously to our own place and then some other facilities in the community. For security reasons, I don't want to list any of those. But that's why we want to upgrade our keyless entry. The ID card maker is probably, I don't know how old it is. I've been with the department for 26 years and it made my idea and it's kind of outlasts its usefulness. And we really can't upgrade either of them. We'll make changes, so I think it's time for new equipment, better equipment.
Yeah, calls for worse than name right there. Very good. Do we have a motion to approve budget amendment 2016 dash zero zero one?
Uh huh.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item, the Chesapeake Feline Association, I'd like to invite you down and sit out here in front, say your name, your address for the record, and I will kind of lead this up for everyone what we talked about. The workshop on Wednesday night, the Chesapeake Feline Organization has received a grant for, and I'll let you get into that, but a grant, and they want to help the town of Elton with their TNR program. And we've got a couple little snags that I've actually mentioned to you about with this, but I think, well, you go ahead and present what you'd like to present, and then we'll talk about it.
My name is Donna Kelly, I'm the president of Chesapeake Feline Association. I live at 201, Charnfield Road in Maryland.
My name is Donna Corcoran, I'm one of the board's directors. I live at 300 Commerce Street in Happy Grace, Maryland.
Thank you. And I guess, can you enlighten us about the grant?
Sure. So, Chesapeake Feline Association was awarded a $25,000 grant from the Department of Agriculture in Maryland, and it is for TNR. That breaks down in several ways. We were awarded $500 for flyers and marketing material, $2303 for equipment, that would be traps and landing nets, $2,000 for rabies vaccines, $5,500 for stay, and $4,500 for neuter. Approximately 400 cats will be altered during this TNR program.
Thank you. We went into a little bit more in-depth, of course, during the workshop, and I think the, I guess the board can ask any questions if they'd like, the consensus, I think, of the board, we love the program, we love the ability that you got a grant, but what I found out, actually with council today, and we took a ride back to a couple different other colonies, and one of the challenges that we have, we can show support as a, as the town board for this program if the board chooses to do so. The challenge that we have is we can't give you permission to go onto private property. And that is a challenge. And John, do you have anything else to add to that?
Just simply, one of the colonies is behind the academy, and in that general area, Big Al Mall, that's all private property. We drove through and surveyed, not surveyed, surveyed, surveyed the area, and it's all on private property. And so, you really would have to kind of take it up to the property, although it's the Portage Company. It could be your contact information.
And we'll be happy to send that over to you.
Okay, that would be great. That is one of the colonies that we are targeting. There has been a lot of feral activity there. Just to let you know, the average life of a feral cat is approximately four to six years, or being, you know, the average. Once we get this colony under control, it will diminish. So, in order to do that, we need to get all the cats that are not stay or neuter done, and remove any of the kittens. So, Chesapeake Feline is committed to doing that. There's also a very large colony in Hollinsworth Manor that we're looking at. So, those are our two targets. We do have several homeowners within Hollinsworth Manor that have offered to act as team captains to help support this mission.
Well, I guess in general, if the board is willing to show support, how would we word that as far as support would go for the program and move forward with the branding program to show that we support the TNR program? We're happy to do, I think we'd be happy to do that. I think the challenging part that we have is we cannot give you permission to go onto the Big Al Mall property to do anything.
I believe if you can supply a letter of support to the Cornish owners of the Big Al Mall, that will speak volumes and help with the support in getting this process started.
Very good. Go ahead.
One of the things I brought up at the workshop was, I know that we in the town would like a support program that's going to be able to help track and neuter the cats, but this is also a county issue that I mentioned to you. We want to make sure that even though Elton is targeted as one of the spots throughout the community, through the county, we need to make sure that the county is all on board with what you're doing because it's not just us, so.
We would be happy to go to the county and also let them know of this grant receivable, and present our target markets, which would be Port Deposit at this point, and Elton, and also get them on board as well. This is just the beginning.
I understand, I just wanted the record to make sure that that's one of the things I brought up.
The second part that you brought up was about the pod, and I can tell you, I absolutely love that pod concept, and I told both of yous in the meeting that I was with you, but after our meeting, as I mentioned to you here prior to this meeting, we were able to research that the pod, or any veterinary clinic, can only be situated in Commercial 1, Commercial 2, Commercial 3, and Business Park. And Gene, can you wave your hand so they see who you are? Because I was telling them, you could give them that part of the ordinance so that they can see that. But the town of Elton, and my delay after the workshop was, we do have some C2 land, I think it's C2, but it's under the water tower. So, I wanted to make sure that we got that clarified, and it's fenced in, and wouldn't be suitable for any type of pod activity, or any type of area that we could do that. So, I'm going to tell you as an individual, I'm more than happy to keep trying to find you a place to put that pod, but as a town, as the mayor of the town, I cannot support any pod being on the town of Elton property in regards to based on our zoning. Now, I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels about that, but I just wanted to make that very clear about that. Is there any additional questions about those?
I had one question, and I've asked several regarding the grant from workshop, but when you wrote the grant, was it for Cecil County or Elton?
It was for Elton specifically and for Deposit.
The two towns.
And the reason that we focused on those two towns was because of the number of feral colonies that we have identified and have already pulled kittens from this past year. And the idea is to get in there during the winter months, and if we do an excellent job trapping and getting the stay and neutrers done, there will be less kittens born in the spring that everyone has to deal with. So, when we pull kittens in the spring, we identify feral colonies that really need attention. So, when Donna and I wrote the grant, we specifically concentrated on those two locations.
Thank you.
I have one question. Appreciate the workshop that we had, and I'm aware of all the other colonies. I too have been back there, but where does the colony locate specifically in Hollinsworth Manor?
The colony is a free roaming colony within Hollinsworth Manor. We went in to pull some kittens, and as you drive in Hollinsworth Manor, and forgive me, I don't know the streets.
Route A, Route A, oh.
Pardon?
Route A is the road end.
Okay, so if you drive all the way back to Route A, at the end of the development, to the left and to the right, there are, we counted over 75 free roaming cats.
Yes.
And we took pictures for another grant that we submitted for, as a matter of fact, it was the Cecil County grant.
Well, we have an estimate of the raw cats that you think, since now that Elton, I know you're talking, 75 in Hollinsworth Manor, I thought you mentioned possibly 200 behind the Big Al Mall. Are there others and numbers?
Our goal is 400, and we are looking at those two colonies. We know that those two areas will then also lead to other areas within Elton and Port Deposit. Port Deposit also has, we counted approximately 150 cats. So, there are well over 400 cats that are free roaming in these two areas. Our goal is 400.
To expand on, which was the last discussion, where the way the grant was written, we supplied some information that the grant actually targeted two specific areas of Hollinsworth Manor and Woodmore Estates. And how is that that you're able to take and expand from those areas then?
Donna and I were invited down to present before the board that we all started agriculture, and we explained to them that Hollinsworth Manor was a subset of what we wanted to do within Elton. And we also explained there were other areas, for example, behind the academy that we wanted to address, and they were in discussion. And they said yes. And the same with Port Deposit.
And there's a group of residents, and again, I hope you can speak to this later on that's here. My understanding that there's a group of residents that already are taking care of the colony that's behind the academy right now. How is that going to affect what's going on right now? Are you in talks with those residents, it's already taken care of that?
I spoke, I spoke with Ricky Lewis from Cat Crusaders. We've been in contact. He's done a lot of trapping in the area, as well as Chesapeake Feline Association. We are going to meet, and we've already had preliminary discussions this whole week about how the process is going to take place. He has a lot of the contacts for the theaters there and the community at Elton Mall. We've made contacts, Chesapeake Feline has made contacts with Hollinsworth Manor, so that's how we're going to do it. This is a joint, all out assault with many organizations that do TNR, and, you know, we're not out there alone doing this. We're going to pull in any resources that we have. There are a lot of people in the community that have, like, we said, recyphery, which I know you're all familiar with, who do programs and who do TNR. So, we are, that's if we are joined together and we accomplish this, as far as I can see. So, does that answer a question?
It does, ma'am, thank you.
Lou, if we were to move forward to support the program, what do we need to do?
Well, she's requesting that the town send a letter to the Portage Company, asking for them to, I suppose, asking for them to grant permission for you to access their property.
Right, thank you.
But I'm not sure.
I think what they were asking-
You would have to probably initiate, I'm sorry, you'd probably have to initiate that, because I don't know, their company may request a waiver of liability or something from your organization and their volunteers involved, I'm not sure. So, we couldn't be involved in that part of it, but we certainly could, you know, show support for a TNR program anywhere in the town of Elton that would benefit both the animals and the residents of the town with respect for being impacted by this number of cats that you described.
I guess my only question is that people are going there right now, what permission do they have? Ricky has already gone there and trapped. What permission has he gained?
We haven't, we don't grant permission at all.
No, I know, but that's a question-
That's only as individuals.
Great. I suppose that that's a question that, you know, comes up in my mind.
And I would think you would need to discuss that with the property unit, rather than the town, because it is not our property, it's the Portage Company. So, to discuss that with that group first, I think would be the appropriate thing to do.
I agree, and I would be happy to do that, but I also believe that we need your support in this process.
The thing, what Louis is focusing, is what you're saying, that when you first mentioned this, that we should, if we give a letter of support to the Cornish, I think you need to do is have the Cornish in your affiliation with your business, send a letter to the town of Elton, and then we respond that way. Instead of us, send a letter to the Cornish. I would rather feel comfortable for you. You need to initiate the letter coming from the Cornish company to the town of Elton, and then we respond that way.
That's unproblem. We'll do everything that we have to do. We will meet with them, and we will get their support, hopefully.
We'll give you a contact person.
Okay, that would be, thank you, I would appreciate that.
And on another note, I mentioned to you that I'm going to try to help with food, as well with all organizations. I'm working on something with Hines. From a food and feeding standpoint, it just hasn't gotten back to me completely on what we're trying to do, but we would be, or I could say, as an individual, not as, from a talent perspective, I'll be happy to help how I can to all groups. And you made a request for, during the workshop, there was money budgeted to ask for help. We haven't made a decision on who we were going to move forward with. I know that about, I guess it was in August, is that what it was, Michelle? In August, I had met with Dr. Carletti, and she actually sold me on the TNR program in general. And I sent a memo out to the board for us to discuss, do we want to move forward with the TNR program? We never brought to an official vote whether we were going to move forward with our donation going that way, or our donation going this way. So, I know that I'm surprising everyone here probably with that, but I don't really know what direction to go. Do we split it? Do we not do anything at this point, or?
Please don't not do anything, and I would appreciate if you can earmark that towards Chesapeake Feline, the $25,000 is covering only the costs of the stay, neuter, and the rabies. It does not cover, and a very small marketing budget, it does not cover all of the other ancillary things that are going to take place with this project.
Can I ask the board what?
My comment, I respond, I mean, I didn't respond to the email I got from the mayor, but my concerns are, we as a town, we're looking for support and help in this process. We didn't pick and choose who we're going to get. We know that it stirred up a little chaos when several organizations came because we picked one person over the other. But we don't want to get in a battle of who we pick and choose, we just need the help and support. Right now, everybody's coming from all different directions with the programs and what's going to benefit us and help us as far as earmarking money and all that stuff. As a board, we can, I don't want to feel like I'm pulling from somebody else and not dealing with them, it's just that I don't want to get in a battle with anybody because we're trying to get help and support to get the cats taken care of. Because we're, our focus has been on the town, and I heard and I read the email, my point is, it kind of steers me the wrong way when someone says we already made a deal with one organization when verbally we talk and we're jumping on everything like we do it normally, we jump on everything that sounds great. We need help, support, and whatever programs might help and benefit us, if that's where I would like to see the money go.
And Commissioner, if I could just add to that, I don't think any other rescue organization in this county has come before you saying that we have received $25,000 and that we are here to partner with you, and we are here to help you. That's what we are doing. We were very quiet the night of that meeting when every one of you were being attacked. And we believe that being quiet and putting, you know, this effort, this is a huge effort that we're undertaking, it speaks volumes for our willingness to go over and above and partner with not only the board and the mayor, but particularly the community members here. That's what we're doing this for. We're doing this for every one of your citizens that are part of your community. We're doing this to help them, we're doing this to help the animals, and, you know, we're all volunteer. None of us take a salary. And I can tell you that Donna and I probably donate 70 to 80 hours a week of our time to this project. So, you know, I am asking you to support us because we are supporting your community.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments to go on or not? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hall, will you be calling persons after?
Oh, no, actually, you're going to be speaking after we're done our business, and you will be called up.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, by the way.
Thank you. Does the board want to move on anything additionally? All right, Lou, you, Lou, you're on.
The first order of business I have is the weight finding sign project. Remind the board that the mayor and commissioner's entered into a memorandum of standing with the State Highway Administration on July 27, 2015, that would allow, that would provide the State Highway Commission to establish four weight finding signs and ultimately eight trailway signs in the town of Elton. These signs will be placed on Merle 279 and 213, Merle 279 at 316 Rappleton Road, Route 40 at 213, and Route 40, Delaware Avenue. These signs have already been designed by our engineer and approved by the State Highway Administration. Subsequent to that, we put out a bid for a contractor to construct or fabricate these signs. The bid was released in 2015. We received one bid from William B. Gilbert Inc. doing business with Gilbert Signs on October 15. Gilbert Signs bid $47,500 for the preparation and installation of the signs by December 31st. Subsequent communications with Gilbert Signs regarding time constraints, their workload issue with the State Highway required materials to fabricate the signs resulted in my request to Gilbert to submit a subsequent bid that meets all of the State Highway material requirements, and also for an extension of time. Gilbert Signs submitted a subsequent bid on November 11th in the amount of $55,350 with a project completion date of March 4, 2016. I subsequently contacted State Highway's administration, requested time extension on the MOU, gaining the project completion time from December 31, 2015 to March 4, 2016, in order for the company to prepare the sign. They, the State Highway notified me that they would grant that extension. Therefore, I recommended the mayor and commissioner accept Gilbert Signs' bid for $55,350 with a completion date deadline, excuse me, of March 4, 2016.
Do we have a motion to approve the bid awards?
So.
Do we have a second?
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item I have, engineering services for 117, 119 West Main Street, commonly known as the municipal parking lot behind 107 North Street. The town obtained a $100,000 grant to repair and enhance the town's parking lot behind 107 North Street from the Maryland Strategic Emulation Smart Group Impact Fund Grant administered by the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. I think Gene Menendez instrumental in getting this $100,000 grant. She subsequently requested proposal from KCI to prepare the necessary specifications to include property survey, preparation, construction plans, bidding documents, electrical design for electric vehicle charging stations, bidding assistance, and construction administrative services. Casey, KCI submitted a November 16 bid to address the scope of work not to exceed a fee of $17,500. And Merle Department of Housing and Community Development subsequently approved the town's request of grant funding for the engineering and design work for this project. So, these engineering services fees, or service fees, are covered by the grant. Once the specifications are completed, the project will be released for bid. Recommended the mayor and commissioner accept the October 16, 2015 proposed from KCI Technologies in the amount of $17,500 for engineering services. We have commenced this project's design.
Do we have a motion to approve KCI's engineering services for 117, 119 municipal parking lot?
So.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next thing I have, the proclamation, 28, 2015. A proclamation, the mayor and commissioner- A proclamation, the mayor and commissioners of the town of Elton declaring November 19, 2015, Elton Business Appreciation Day in Elton. Whereas the business investment, whereas business investment in the Elton community has played and continues to play an important and vital role in enhancing the town by providing an array of products and services, creating jobs, providing tax revenue, attracting further business investment, economic development, fostering a positive and competitive spirit among business leaders and strengthening the backbone of the local economy. Whereas the mayor and commissioners recognized that the business leaders in the Elton community have been the fundamental ingredient for Elton's growth and development over the years and the leading catalyst for its continuing commercial success. Whereas in an effort to emphasize and highlight the importance of business investment in Elton, in the Elton community, the mayor and commissioners have concluded that a special day should be declared to recognize all those who have stated claims in Elton's business community. Therefore, none being done, the mayor and commissioners of the town of Elton hereby proclaim November 19, 2015, Elton Business Appreciation Day. And Elton encourages everyone to support their local business community.
We have a motion to accept proclamation P. 28th, 2015. Do we have a second? Any discussion on proclamation? All in favor? Motion carries.
In conjunction with that proclamation, I have a grant for alcoholic beverage restriction waiver that we granted to the Elton Alliance, Inc., 101 East Main Street, Elton, for the date of November 19, 2015, for Elton Business Appreciation Day. Recommend that the board grant this waiver of alcohol with beverage restriction to the Elton Alliance.
We have a motion to approve a waiver. Do we have a second? Any discussion? Mary Jo, I just want to ask you real quickly, did you contact the liquor board in regards to?
And we are fine. It's free to the people that are coming out. They were invited and so we're, and we also carry a license to help the year for special events.
Very good, thank you. All in favor? Motion carries.
Going along, my next order of business, Resolution R. 12, 2015, disposal of surplus property. This resolution shall declare certain property in the town of Elton a surplus and authorize the disposal of the property. Whereas the charter of the town of Elton, Article 13, C. 13-1, provides with the disposal of any real or personal property in the town, and has been declared, that has been declared surplus by a resolution of the board. Whereas the following town moved vehicles, vehicle, has been, has exceeded the respect of service life due to age, mileage, and general condition, and is recommended for disposal of surplus property. This includes a 2001 Ford Taurus that was assigned to the police department, is four years old, and has $105,000 and change on the odometer. I recommend that when you sell this, this property, I'll, once that's approved by the board, I'll make the arrangements to take it to, take it to Ritchie Brothers Law.
Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R. 12, 2015? Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries, thank you.
Only comment I have is the 2001 Taurus's police cars that were sold at the last auction along with an old tractor from the treatment plant. The town was given a check, $13,690 for that surplus property. So it is in their best interest to dispose of property along. I think I can sleep some of my items in my bed.
Very good, thank you, Louie. Let's see, actually, I had a couple things. Tomorrow, the Business Appreciation Day starts off at 3 to 5 o'clock at the Elton Chamber Alliance Visitor Center. I welcome all the businesses in the town of Elton to come check out our visitor center. And also, we want to be there to thank you for doing business in the town of Elton. We're going to have a representative from the state of Maryland there to ask if you have any questions about expansion, funding, anything for your business. Hopefully, we'll be able to answer them tomorrow. It'll be a great networking event for business owners throughout the town to get to meet each other, get to meet your town officials, get to meet your, your town police force. I think it's going to be a, a very nice tool for us. This is only the first one we're going to have. The next one will be for the residents of the town of Elton. So I want to surprise the board with that one in the, in the spring, the picnic in the park. But that was the one item I had. The other item I wanted to mention, and I think Jean Minner has snuck out, and I wanted to talk to her, what is in regards to, and, and is the sidewalks along the Methodist Church? We had, we have talked over and over about moving forward with that, and I think the last pickup we had, we had the historic, historic board that was kind of putting a halt on us moving forward. John, can you tell me, can they ask us to stop on that, or can we sidewalk? Are they included in the project or just buildings?
The sidewalks are within the historic district. They had, they really simply asked, and the reason I, I have to answer this is I also happen to be the attorney for that, for that board. I sat in on the meeting, and what they had asked is to, and then see what it would cost to redo, pretty much visually as appears today, only cleaned up and made safe.
But they want to use the same bricks?
Well, they'd like to use the same bricks to the extent that they want to reuse, to the extent that they can't be reused to be replaced with something that would appear visually the same. The question is asked as to the cost, both in terms of replacement and the redo, and then the ongoing maintenance costs associated with it. I don't know where that big issue stands, I think Jean was working on that, but it's really a good place.
Okay, I guess we'll have to ask her. How does the board feel about that? How do you guys feel? Do you want to, across the street, we've got the brick inlay. The areas where we have solid brick per se is probably the, the areas of the town that we get the calls on all the time for not pulling the grass out from, from the sidewalks.
I think the most critical thing is the, is the fact of being safe, and, and they are out of the line right now. And certainly, I can understand the point of the historic society wanting the bricks to be there, but, you know, placing them so that it'll be safe as well.
I agree that we've had this complaint for several years and didn't do anything about it, but they are very dangerous there. I would, I would like to see if we did take up those bricks, but we reused them for something else in the town. So we still keep the history of the brick, whether, whether it's an entrance sign or something, to reuse the historic bricks. And then they have a safe sidewalk, but the bricks will still be in good use.
I can tell you also, the conversation revolved around replacement of the entire sidewalk with modern sidewalk. Another option was the replacement of the sidewalk with the red bricks stripped as it is from the opposite side of Main Street. There was, there was a comment that they would never go along with that in Chesapeake City, and in fact, KCI, who was making the presentation, said, oh, yes, that's exactly what we're doing in Chesapeake City. So, you know, that was viewed by some to be a compromise between including some appearance of the historic brick and, you know, without appearance, and also ensuring the safety of the more smooth, more, more modern sidewalk. They were looking for costs, another speculation was.
Lou, how do you feel about it?
I feel that, that we should honor our commission, their request, of course, because they're appointed officials by the board. So we have to give them definite access to what they think is of the best interest of the historic district of the town. The only issue we have is that it exacerbates the cost of this project because our, our people are going to just, we actually remove the granite curb and, and brick and everything and backfill with a concrete curb, which will give us a, a very linear curved line rather than that chunky thing that's there now. And then we would do concrete with this brick accent to actually mirror the other side. So this replacement of the brick and, and really doing that changes the game, so to speak, as to how we're going to approach it.
Can you give us your best estimate of both? Dan, is that something you can give us?
I think it didn't, did they shoot over some costs? It was like in the $200,000 range or something. Depends on.
If it was a curve, too, yes.
Can, can they keep the granite curb?
Well, we're afraid that because it's not a smooth, you know, a smooth line there, it's, you know, it's settled, it could be a tripping hazard if you don't have it, you know, like sidewalks are smooth, you know, but where it is right now, I don't know if you want to make it smooth and leave that there. I'm thinking about if you took it up and replaced it somehow, you know, to get it out. Some of that sounds like that, but there's no break around. That's just all concrete there. Then it transitions to brick again, then through spots there where it's missing. It's a kind of a hodgepuck.
Well, let's do this. Dan, can you get us kind of a, an engineering quote from yourself and let us know how much you think it's going to be for the, to do it in brick? And then tell us how much you think it's going to be to do it in concrete, maybe with a brick inlay? And then how much it would be just doing it in concrete?
If I can rip up a little section, I'll be able to let you know.
Okay. And then we would give that information to the historic committee and, and make them aware of the cost differences and give us a better understanding also.
That's true.
Okay? Thank you. Wanted to mention that on November 19, tomorrow, we've got a lot, of course, a lot going on in town, but probably one of the most unique things is the football team, Elton High School team is in the final eight. And I kind of believe it's been the spaghetti that they've been getting at our local restaurant. They are, since they've started to eat the spaghetti there on Thursday nights. Well, it's going to continue on, we had a little bit of a, we've got a little bit of a challenge that, a little bit of a challenge that, we got the Business Person of the Year Award, it's going to be hosted in downtown tomorrow night. But we're going to serve the, the football team in the alliance office in the Old Town Hall portion after, after they're done eating. I wanted to mention that there's a pep rally going to be held at the Hurricanes at 6:30 for the football team over in the other shopping center. And then on Friday morning at the school, there's going to be a pep rally at 1:30. So I think it's important to show your purple and gold if we can get to the final four after tomorrow. I think it'd be great for our community if we can pull this off or not. Well, that is all I have to say at this point about what I have to say. Commissioner Van Green, you were on.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Good morning. Good evening, everybody. Good morning, I have, um, is Chesapeake Feline here?
Turn out in the hall.
Would, yeah, can somebody grab them, please? Thank you. Just had a couple of questions. While they're coming in, the, the only other topic I wanted to talk about was, I was notified last night about a human broke to stop the dope. Is, I have Billy's Shopping Center this Saturday from 11 to 12. I actually don't have a lot of details about it other than the description of the tragic loss of lives to drug addiction. I wish I knew more about this, to help to raise awareness. My understanding is that county executive, Ms. Moore, and also the strong possibility that Maryland state delegate, Mr. Warner, will be there. So I wish there was more, somebody else can say anything about that.
That's up on our Facebook page as well, and under what's happening. I figured Elton Chamber Alliance.
Commissioner, you're going to be handing out information on all available resources in the county for persons in need of assistance, persons suffering from addiction, and additions to doing the human work.
All right, thank you. The other thing was, good evening.
We were, we were outside having a chat conversation.
Asking questions, I have no problem with that.
Do you need to come back?
No, no, I actually just, you, you mentioned Cat Crusader, Ricky. Is, is he already ready to go as far as trapping any of the, say, gas for Hollingbrook Manor?
He is willing to assist Chesapeake Feline Association, rich people that trap with him, yes. Yes, he, adjunct, work together.
All right, people that work with him, and sorry, I mean, you don't know me very well, but I do like to ask a lot of questions.
That's okay.
The, 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 people that like to work with him, so if there's somebody that traps that doesn't like to work with him, then who would be picking up the cat?
We have, we have, we have.
Yeah, from what I, from what I heard, that Ricky would be working with people that work with him. So there are the people that don't work with him, and, and you're saying people in Hollingbrook Manor would be trapping these cats?
There are, no. What will happen is that we will, we have a captain, so we'll have a person that says that we have a captain. She will help us identify where the cats are. Trappers will go out. They will be from Chesapeake Feline Association, okay? And Ricky has offered to also assist with trappers that he has. So, you know, not everybody can track every, every night. And we have designated days that our vet at Friendly Falls is going to take in the feral cats that we bring. So it'll be a coordination. So Chesapeake Feline may be able to do it this week, and Ricky can, Ricky may say, okay, I have two trappers that are available next week. It's going to be, you know, everybody that is in the community that takes, carries the cats and that knows the feral colonies, hopefully, is going to pull together. Ricky and I have been in conversation multiple times about this grant, and he is on board, and he is willing to support this, this operation, as well as our volunteers with Chesapeake Feline Association. We will be leading the trapping.
Other questions I had?
Does that help?
Yes, ma'am. Great, thank you. So, thank you.
Mr. Warner? Mr. Johnson?
I have nothing, and I hope to see everybody tomorrow. Have a great day.
Very good. I'd like to, this is the time of the meeting, we invite the public to come up and say some things for the good of the town. Ms. Julian Clark, come on down from 506 North Street.
Hey, I have it wrong, I am the mayor.
The mayor, the mayor.
Okay. I just swore that I'm not going to get up and say anything, but the devil got right in my side of the conversation. I like that. Thank you, ladies, for coming from Chesapeake Feline. I, along with this lady sitting back here.
Please put that mic to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's, that's my dog. I have two other people who, myself and seven other people in the community go daily. Rain, shine, sleet, or snow, I know you just spoke to someone. We feed the cats behind the acne and the polly. It comes out of our own money. We don't have one cent. I spend probably $100 a week, and the other people do too. We get cubs, fill the tub with straw. When it snows, we shovel the snow. We work difficult. I'm out there five days a week, and I must say, I have never seen you there. I have never seen you there. I'm not here to argue, I just, just the point.
And you're addressing us.
I am. About two weeks ago, three weeks ago, I wrote a letter to you, Bob, about my concerns. And also, if myself had been aware of this workshop we had, I believe that we could have worked in that workshop, and none of this would have been brought out in the town. We were not privy to it, had it not been for my friend over here, Mr. George, who called me yesterday and told me about this meeting, we wouldn't be here. Now, I cannot understand a couple of things here. I saw you today, several people out for the cats, whatever. You said they were so friendly, rained up you. You said they were so friendly, ran up you, they thought that you were going to feed them. Did they look like a bunch of feral cats? No. Now, I have my notes kind of jumbled here. Mrs. Murdock, and one of the gentlemen, Kim, in the past three weeks, had caught and taken twenty cats down to Dr. Mindy. I just sat there and heard, and I'm sure whether, did I hear right, that you're not sure where the money's going to go to? I thought that that grant had already been given to Mindy to pay for these cats.
No one on this board has voted for money to go to?
She's under the impression that, well, I'm not, I'm not going there. We were trapped next Tuesday, but the Cornish Company went out and cut a lot of brush down, and the cats were too frightened to come out. Now, Mr. John Peters works for the Cornish Company. I have, we have become, we work well with the cats. Mr. Peters was out there to get them. He has allowed us to trap out there. There's been no problem. There's been no problem. I just feel that all of this would not have been, had the grant here, we could have sat down and worked it out, what you're going to do, what we're going to do, and everybody's going to do. That's all I have to say about this. All of this is done out of, out of our pockets. We don't ask for any money. We just go out and do it. And if pet owners were more cognizant of what their animals need, instead of us going out there every second or third day, oh, there's a new cat, where did it come from? Those kittens, somebody just dropped kittens. We could bring the population down if people would stop coming by and dropping the kittens off. That's where the problem is. So. We've done twenty. And prior to that, those last couple of years, they've been very sunken. Some of the cats' ears are knocked, some of them are tattooed. If you do feel that you are going to go in there and start trapping, it would be a courtesy to us to let you know when cats are done, so you won't be re-trapping them. I would hope, I would hope, for the good of the cats, for the community, and we don't have to come to this committee, and that all the people in town hear this, that we can work together and not bring it into the town.
I would agree.
Is there any more, have any questions to make?
There is here.
I.
Yep. You can talk to, she's, she's talking to us.
Right.
Thank you, Mrs. Clark.
Okay. And I thank you for going out today, checking on the situation for me. It's a problem for the cats, it's a problem for the community, it's expensive, and going out there and pouring down rain, it's not fun. And going out there with my snow shovel and shoveling me a spot to get in at eighty-one years old isn't fun either. So there's a lot of work to it, or there is paperwork on grants.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Regina Mollenshot, Fifty-Six Button Bush, come on down.
Great, thank you.
Did I, did I get that correct?
Mollenshot, that's good.
All right, very good.
That takes some practice.
Now, I didn't, that was the first time I've ever said your last name.
Yeah. Again, my name is Regina Moll, but from the Fifty-Six Button Bush Award in Elton. And I'm here to address a really amazing project that has happened, and the community may already know that. We installed a public sculpture, excuse me, public sculpture, a piece of art, to enhance on our Arts and Entertainment District here in Elton, and moreover, for our county and for our state. It's an epic sculpture that we like to say will bring the community together. And so far, it is. And there's a lot of buzz going on, you may have read articles in the paper about it. The idea got started when my father passed, who passed two and a half years ago. He was a local blacksmith who did a lot of community service in regards to his blacksmithing. And he was also, he was also consummate about education, and he went to schools and demonstrated his, his craft. And I came to the Arts Council saying, I have this idea, as we closed up his forty-two-year metal shop, which was a big scrap of metal. I said, what, what should we do with all this metal? And the idea came to me that we should make this sculpture. And so through some grant money that we applied for through the Arts Council, and through some monies that were reserved for where it is actually located, through the Department of Juvenile Services and the JABA Program, an organization called Tom, excuse me, Tom and Katie Stoner Foundation, which supports open spaces for sacred places. And they deal a lot with the adjudicated services as well as court systems and so forth. So the, the sculpture was placed on Veterans Day, the eleventh, the last Wednesday, and it was hoisted in with a crane. Some of you may have seen that. And we're very excited. It is a fifteen-foot sculpture, fifteen by five foot, the metal sculpture mixed metal. And it has a lot of reflection about what it means to me for a dedication to my father. But moreover, the artist who has built this, constructed this, forged, fabricated this sculpture is a local blacksmith. He, his operation is out of Insiapure, France. He manages a blacksmith shop, the operating blacksmith shop there, keeps the Insiapure alive. And he's the one who has fabricated this sculpture. His name is Matt Harris. And this weekend, on Sunday, we'll be doing a dedication ceremony for the sculpture to invite it to, invite the community together and celebrate bringing public arts to the community. One of the platforms that I'm going to run with is using this as an educational point, which my father would have impressed upon if he were still here. And we're bringing it to the school systems to make them aware of its, what it can bring back to each individual. And that's anything from, you know, development of cognitive skills and understanding art. It can be used in technology and so on and so forth. There's a lot of opportunities for people to utilize art with, and we want to bring that to. The biggest problem that I've had so far in the, we announced it in the summer that we were establishing this sculpture at the Unity Garden at the Circuit Courthouse. And at that point was when we started to really reach out to the community for donations. Locally, we have not really felt the, the love of donations. And we had earmarked a forty thousand dollar budget to make this happen. We've covered a lot of the materials, obviously, because it's there, existing. However, the operating costs and schoolwork costs are still to occur. We are still reaching, we are shy of ten thousand dollars for our, our goal. So this is something that is a, a community-based project, and so we're trying to get the word out, and in hopes that the town, one can recognize that, and the county can recognize what its benefits are going to be. One, on a marketing standpoint, I don't know if you've all noticed, it's a big heart, although someone said to me today, what is it? Do you see the heart? And they said, no. Okay. Well, there's some education to be done there. But art is whatever you take out of it. And so we, you know, it's an education for everyone, and I think it's really stir the pot to enhance what Elton has in the Arts Entertainment District. And so we're looking for more support from the town financially to make this happen. But moreover, the dedication being this, this Sunday at three o'clock at the Unity Spirit Garden at the Circuit Courthouse. There'll be festivities and food and.
I, I think it'll be wonderful. We, I will be out of town, but we wanted to make sure that you announced it tonight, and hopefully the Cecil Wing will print something about this dedication for Sunday. And I guess to add to it, which is going to be named?
Yes, name the sculpture. Bringing the community involvement again was an idea we had to, to bring people into town to see the sculpture. And it's open to all citizens of Cecil County and those that work or are employed in Cecil County. Naming the sculpture is going to be your job. And so we really invite you to come out and see it. And there is a prize. The Elton Alliance has supported a two hundred and fifty dollar cash prize if you win after your fifty-word-or-more essay on why you named the sculpture as you did, and why public garden is important to our community. So we feel that's a great platform to, once again, bring people into town. So I see nothing but good. And the beautiful thing is it sits right in front of the last remaining wedding chapel. And if you look at it from inside the courtyard, you see the wedding chapel, and I think Cecil Wing captured a picture on that last week. And so I'm hoping that brings a lot of good energy to the town.
And if anyone would like to make a private donation, it goes to the Cecil County Arts Council?
CecilCountyArtsCouncil.org. You can make your donation there online, or you can go to Cecil County Arts Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay. Dave Heelus.
Heelus.
All right. One fifty-nine Thomas Jefferson, come on down.
Good evening. Well, I'm making this quick, I have to pick my daughter in two minutes.
Oh, very good.
For work on two thirteen, looks really great.
Finally, it's starting to happen.
I'd like to actually take a look at the Nancy, there's just a lot of garbage along the roadway there. Maybe we'll have to call the works to clean that up.
Are there any prayers for county roads?
Muddy lanes, muddy lanes at county. Nancy is, is in St. Howard.
That's our challenge, is that we've got so many county attempts, but we can send a letter and make sure that that can.
Yeah, it's really a lot of garbage collected out there. I appreciate it, you guys.
We certainly will.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you so much. Okay. Would anyone else like to say anything? Come on down, Miss Elizabeth Burke.
Quick question. The tent sitting in back of, of the shopping center, who owns that property?
That property is owned by the Cornish Company.
Okay.
And, and you know, I wanted to mention, so everyone's aware of it, what they're doing back here today. The chief and I, and actually John Downs went back there, and we met with Mr. Peters and another representative. What they're doing back here is a couple of things. They, they trimmed the brush back a little bit, but they're, they're also going to put a fence up on the property line. Along that fence, they're putting high-security cameras, very high-deep security cameras, so that they can see if there's any trespassing on the property per se. But they also included security now. The Big Elk Mall has a private security firm that is actually from the hours of, I think, eight in the morning till five in the evening, and then, which is full-time from eight to five, and then from five o'clock, I guess, till midnight.
And they have a rover between?
They have a rover between the Big Elk Mall and their property in northeast. So it was something that we discussed several months ago, and I have to say, the Cornish Company stepped up and, and they brought some security to the Big Elk Mall, which I think was well-meaning. One of the, one of the other items that they want to look at is maybe relocating the, the bus stop that's in the Big Elk Mall. I think currently it's located in a, quite frankly, I don't know exactly where it's located, but I think they might want to see if they can get that moved, and that's something that we're supposed to get back to more. It'll still be in the Big Elk Mall, but in a different location. But I think it's great. I know that the Elton Police Department will have keys to that gate, and I think they'll have access to the camera. Anyone else have anything to say? Mr. Whitehair, come on down.
Whitehair, Nineteen Peter Road, Elton, Maryland. By the way, I really enjoyed the sculpture you had your father, or you dedicated your father, really very attractive on the range tree. I just want a couple of comments. It was in the way that you were negotiating the town of Elton with the county to try and get the property to have a sports complex or a rec center over here by the, by the school board, which I think is a great idea. And I've also talked to people even you about that, you're going to have to have a better access road in there, and there's one really available. If you take a look at Berkeley Boulevard, it runs up to Collins Avenue. When Bill Berkeley was living, I and Dr. Ken Lewis tried to get that thing to loop around the railroad avenue. The property along there is, most of it's non-informant property. And I suggest, and this is what Bill Berkeley suggested, that property owners there donate that property to the town of Elton as a gift. Diane and I, Don, we own three of the lots. John Listenberg owns property owners, and I'm sure he can work with you. And Gene Hermes Estate owns a lot of, is a raccoon, a railroad avenue. And I'm sure his family would donate that to the town, where you could have a real nice access road, two lanes coming into that property. I think the town really should go and get that, try to get people to donate that property to the town, like the county's going to do, so keep the cost down, and have somebody, of course, the town has to call down, somebody pave that, and make it loop around, you could actually loop right around the railroad avenue. And the product's worth. I think the town needs to really pursue that access road on Collins, loop around. That, that's all I wanted to think of.
Thank you, and thank you for your gift.
No. Okay. You haven't got a compass yet. I know, I'm sure Gene Hermes Estate would have cut, donate that land, and I know John Listenberg.
That, that's actually in the plan.
In the master plan.
In the master plan.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, in the map as well.
That's Bill Burke's dream to have that thing loop around.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mrs. Hair.
At the Episcopal Church, which is also a historic church, we have a cement sidewalk. They took our brick away, made it cement. Second thing is, I saw where northeast is taking one of their built empty buildings and offering it for rent for crafters or artisans for the Christmas holidays. Haven't we thought, given that any thought for the, yeah? It's a good idea.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say? Yes, sir.
My name is Michael All, a gentleman.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to say that, I'm not meaning to be offended, but I'm a little bit offended by Mrs. Care or Harris said that she's never seen us behind the Acme. Well, I'm a United States Navy, I'm a retired Marine. I don't lie. I've been out there many times, spent many, many of my dollars. I want to say, I appreciate the fact that she's also feeding the cats because they need to be fed, but she doubted a feral cat. A feral cat will run up and get food, try to pick it up, and you'll know it's a feral cat, it'll rip you up, I don't care if it's a kitten, a teenager, or whatever. But we have been there all the time, spent many months, spent twenty-five thousand dollars last year on these cats, and, and I love it. I'm not complaining about it at all. This one for my raccoons. I, I don't have them contained, they come outside the house every day. I bought two dinners from Theo Peck down town to feed my raccoons, and, and feed them every night. I usually buy them the giant subs from Walmart, the biggest, to eat them. Five pizzas, they're there every evening. I would gladly, if I had no food, just food for myself, I would feed it to my animals. That's just me, so I'm not complaining about spending any money. Just saying, certainly appreciate them going out there to feed your cats, but I can say, I've never seen her there either. She's not seen me there, I haven't seen her there. So I think that's one to want, I support. But, I believe, I am out. Now, I did not sign to be a part of the Chesapeake Elian Association. My fiance is the president, and I bet her for Alps, I have all of a miserable life. I can afford to feed myself very well, I can afford to feed these animals very well. Again, hang down with the animals, or immediately, it would be my animals.
Thank you. Mr. All?
I just wanted to say, it wasn't Mrs. Hair.
Well.
Clark.
Clark.
Mrs. Clark. This is my mother, Mrs. Mrs. Hair.
Okay.
Okay. That's, that's all I wanted to say. And why Mrs. away, the dying hair.
No, I wanted to make it specific. Yeah.
That's all I wanted to say.
Yeah.
If anyone else has anything to say? This, well, first of all, before we adjourn the meeting, I wanted to mention we need to have a closed meeting this evening to consult with council to obtain a legal advice on a legal matter. Do we have a motion to have a closed meeting? Do we have a second? Any discussion or closed meeting? All in favor? All right. We will not reconvene. We will not reconvene. This meeting is adjourned.